I see him everywhere though.
Really?
Everywhere. It's not wrong, right? We were at very least we've met at Steve's every other week.
All right, you are alive Bob.
All right, welcome to the April second twenty twenty five zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Uh, we start out with some basics here. Uh, I would definitely like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Foundation under God indivisible with all due emphasis for all.
With that, some housekeeping stuff, we got to do. Attendance, we'll start out Robert Peckham present Beth Mossworth. John McGlorine, Christian Chamberlain, Heather Robinson, Timothy Harrington, and Aaron Lehman.
Present.
Could I get a motion for last month's meeting minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with regards to the meeting minutes for March fifth twenty twenty five, I move to approve.
Second. Oh, I'm gonna give this to Tim seconded by Mr. Harrington. All in favor.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, Aaron. I thought it was Tim, I'm sorry. Aaron, Aaron seconded that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstain, aye. For all of those, for the meeting minutes. Uh, motion carries and now. You can start, so. Uh, the way I will run this first, uh, if there's any issue, the emergency exits are either straight across the hall or on either side of the boardroom. Uh, I will start out, I will call up each applicant. Some of you will obviously be online. Uh, once we call you up, I would ask you to clearly state your name and address for the record. And then we will ask a series of questions. Some of these questions might seem basic, obvious or redundant, but these are things that we need to make a decision. So with that, I would like to start with twenty twenty five zero zero four.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to application twenty twenty five. Zero zero four by Adam Townsend, I Beth Mossworth motion to reapprove said application. For three hundred and thirty six square foot shed due to a clerical issue on the original notice.
Second. Seconded by Christian, that's I want I'm double guessing my hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstain, aye. The motion carries. Great. One down, couple go. Next is twenty twenty five zero zero six with regards to Abbott's on Henrietta Road. Christian. Oh, is anybody?
Are they online Heather?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
Oh Heather muted me. Hi everyone, my name is Brendan Drew, I'm from Abbott's Frozen Custard. Thank you for taking the time to see this application, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, so looking at the application. You want a second pole sign that's already existing, um. The. Could you explain why you feel it's vital to have a second pole sign?
Uh, sure, I mean vital, it's obviously as a uh, as a retail business, it's nice to have as much signage as possible. Um, you know, we entered into a lease with this property a year and a half ago. With the expectation that we would be able to use both. Pole signs because the tenant before us, I'm sure you guys know Happy Days Ice Cream also used the pole sign Brewster's before that. Also use the pole sign and we, you know. We know that more signage, the more visibility, it's it's better for our business, quite honestly, that's why we're there on that road in a freestanding building is uh. You know, it's easier to find us really at the end of the day and and we we know from unfortunately other locations that do not have as much signage this one that it. It it definitely hurts the business, it really does.
Right, I did look at other locations throughout the county and all ones don't even have one pole sign, let alone two. Um. One thing that um originally the sign that you wanted the variance for was had the um name of the plaza on it instead, it was before you moved in and. I guess before Happy Days was there too, um. Did the business, um. Was there? You you specifically moved in there saying that you could have both signs?
Yeah. That was the understanding.
The, the. Even though he might have been told that, they didn't have the jurisdiction to tell.
Right, exactly.
That's yeah. We're learning this now, right, like like after the fact.
Hindsight's always clear.
Right, this was, this was a little bit of a surprise when we received this in the mail, we kind of scratched her head and said, oh boy, what did? What did we do, you know, um, wrong, because that's the last thing we want to do, but um, yeah, here we are, here we are.
I have other questions.
Does anyone else have other questions? On the board?
Just, just to be super clear, there's two signs, what are on those two signs today?
Uh. Abbott's Frozen Custard on both of them.
Same thing on both sides.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, the um. Yes.
They pretty previous tenants were the exact same, both.
Uh, yes, yes, the only difference between us and the previous tenant was that they had the word drive through, it was Happy Days. Logo and then underneath it on the, on the taller sign was the words drive through in black font.
Is the lease agreement that you have with the plaza owner that you have usage of that? Second pole sign?
Uh, I'd have to double check, but I'm, I believe so, I mean, he was the, our landlord is very aware of. I mean. Where the signs went, how the signs got there, he had to approve them before they were put up. Um, yeah, and he was a. Yeah, I mean, he was a uh, he was very much part of this entire process, he's a great guy, very, very helpful, um. Yeah, I'd have to double check the specific language of the lease, but I think the lease reads something like we have the ability to use all, all signage available to the property.
Thank you.
So he went in their eyes open. With the expectation that the landlord had this. Under control, but it clearly is that that's not the case. It doesn't match. Um, so, so what are we feeling right now? Oh. Any other questions? What do we feel right now, thumbs up, thumb? I can't see.
I just.
In the middle?
Yeah, I mean, I. You know. I feel like there's an alternative to a variance here.
Like what? I'm open with hearing, I guess.
No, yeah, and I. I guess I want to ask the question like this.
Is there an alternative to a variance here?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, are, are you suggesting they would have to take the pole sign down? Or they just take their signage down and leave the pole, pole sign blank?
Right, because keep, keep this two points in mind if I may. Uh, twenty years, are we aware of any complaints? You were there this week, didn't even see the second signs.
I didn't see it, the little one.
Right, so where is there a problem to solve by burdening? The tenant at the cost of removing the sign.
But I'm listening, yeah.
Although it is in perpetuity of the property, we do grant this. And I mean, it's as we've seen here when I was Abbott's that it's been changed from one business to another, they're still adding. They're signing.
Uh, do we know for a fact that? A prior tenant did not get a variance approved? Have we verified that?
If the, if they. If they did.
I mean, it could be.
Forty. Well, there's.
I would have, I guess, I would have to research again, but I mean, I know that it was never approved by two.
Way back when the building was built.
Never proved.
Need a.
One tenant had both signs.
Oh, it did, yeah, it did need a. Because it was one and one. So what did you feel, what do you feel?
I mean, the question for the tenant to ask, you know, at what point did that sign go from being displaying just the name of the plaza? So to I guess first Happy Days. And now putting out Abbott's.
Good point.
And was that allowable, I mean, was that, was that whole sign originally put up just to? To note, like any other plaza sign like in the plaza or is that?
But they're in the.
Does that sign put up just for that specific purpose? Or was it for that or to advertise any of the tenants? In that plaza.
They got their buildings.
You don't know. Yeah.
Mister, if I may for a quick second, when I did a records research in our systems, there were no previous variances for this parcel for the extra pole sign. The pole sign was put up prior to the Brewster's building being constructed. So it might have just been a missed clerical thing when that new building was constructed, but there were no variances for that pole sign.
Either one.
Is this just one?
Correct. It's one parcel for the plaza and the ice cream store. It's all one parcel.
So if it's one parcel. Why would this not be um? Nonconforming grandfathered in when this tenant moved in.
Heather, was the second pulse pulse line, we know when that was constructed, was that made, put in with the uh? When the uh, other, the building was added on?
I, I don't have the answer to that because it wasn't a variance, so I don't have that information in my records, it would be in the building department records.
So that goes back to Eric's question.
So, so this is all one plaza, right?
It is, so what could happen?
Addresses for each, each location.
He said no.
I mean Bam- Bamboo Garden is twenty seven sixty one. This is twenty seven fifty five.
And that, that may maybe in the past, that's where an error was made, why there's two poles signs there, I. Someone may have came in years ago and got a pole sign for twenty.
Whatever, one of the other numbers.
The other numbers.
Okay.
I mean.
So, so let me, hey, let me finish my straw poll, you're yes. What are you? You know, you're maybe. Two. Okay, so it's, it's a go. Numerically, it's a go, what do you feel?
I, I still feel it's redundant regardless.
So we need another person to, to write it up, Tim, are you willing to?
Sure.
Thank you. Numerically, it's, it's an answer, so we can. Um, so uh, we will need a minute to, to write up the paperwork. I mean, could we put it near the? To put drive through on the sign too? It's a. Isn't gonna help.
Well.
There'll be two different signs, I mean, it'll be.
Is there, I mean, I know that there's a.
Yeah, because Happy Days used to have the.
Right, but it's functioning.
It is, they still use it. Okay, and I'm gonna ask a question, is there any other questions for members of the audience?
We're good today.
Okay, so.
My cord's tired today. Give them if somebody has chocolate milkshake or a hot one Sunday out there, can I?
We can, listen, as much as I'd love to take that in from you, we, I don't think we should do that right now.
Oh, that's true, that's.
You can't influence the jury, that's not right, we'll talk.
All right, later, 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 sorry.
And I do want to go on record, even though I'm opposed to the extra sign, I do love Abbott's.
Yes, I, I appreciate that, I, that, you guys, I don't, you know, I know I haven't been able to deal with everyone in the town yet, but the people I have dealt with. Are phenomenally helpful, like from the day one that we went to this building, I've really been, you know, I deal with people all over this country that. It, it's really been a pleasure working with you guys, so I really just appreciate.
Well, the buttering up seems to be working, so keep going.
Well, we appreciate the positive feedback.
Agreed.
No, it's great, it's, it's nice, it's, it's nice, it really is. Yeah. Um, yeah. Can I answer any other, I mean, I?
Nope.
Any questions, okay.
Nope, we're good, we're just, there's just a little bit of paperwork and then in a minute we'll uh, we'll do a vote.
I'll shut up over here.
All right. No. You guys have one in Naples too, right?
We used to, we used to, I, former Rochesterian, uh, but that, that closed, uh. Well, fifteen years ago now, um, that building doesn't even exist anymore, Fifth Ave South in Naples has turned over so much that. The person that owned the building. Sold it to a high-rise developer and now it's, you know. Uh, investment banking on the first floor and nice high-rise condos above it for a couple stories, so.
Nice.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That's four, Naples four.
Oh. Oh. I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
Well, there's no high rises there.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's why I'd better say it.
So.
Yeah.
I haven't been there in a while, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, I mean, no, no, patient in Florida, no.
I don't think, you said there's no more?
No, 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 but we actually, we have, we um, we have two other locations in, in Florida, one in Winter Garden, former Rochesterian, Jen Pelcher. Uh, and another one in Vero Beach, that's been there for almost twenty years and will actually be opening up. Uh, three more in the next. Two or three months, um, in Coconut Creek, in Merritt Island, another former Rochesterian and the villages, uh, in, in the villages. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
What was that last one?
Folges, you guys have been to the villages before, it's uh.
The, the golf community, I'll leave it at that.
Yes, yes, exactly, yes, it is.
The answer is no, but I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, there you go, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's very unique, but um, yeah, it's.
The density, the density of golf carts there is very. Impressive, I hear.
More, more, more golf carts and cars, it's um, yeah, yeah, it's like a playland for the re, for the retirement community, it's amazing. Like, I'm, I'm kind of jealous, I went down there, I'm like, wow, this is uh, this is pretty good.
Spiders in the United States. Which is crazy.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, the amount of Rochesterians who travel outside of Rochester for the winter months, that go to Florida. Feel like it's half our city.
It is.
Yeah.
Really? I think it's not very. And the really? Well. Or it's. Or the experience. Nice.
I was gonna say, like, one of the strangest, like, the nicest part of Florida? No?
Nice, but not the nicest.
Well, what?
Naples probably nicest. Or Miami or something.
Miami is the. Too much.
This is the houses are like, it started like. It's.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With regard to application number ZBA two thousand twenty five dash zero zero six for area variance, I move to approve. As follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised and held a public hearing, two has considered all relevant information. And three has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings effect. Variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Or a detriment to nearby properties, both signs have been in place for over nineteen years. Two, the variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative, given the signs existed before the tenant took occupancy. Three, the variance requested is substantial, but given the pole signs exist already, there will be no greater impact by allowing them to persist. Four, the variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. Proving this variance will result in no change to the environment. The difficulty related to the variance was not self-created. Landlord communicated to the new tenants that both signs could be. Uh, could represent this customer, Abbott's Frozen Custard. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Beth.
I mean, you're top dog.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So opposes Heather, Christian and Aaron, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, with that, the motion carries, uh, the application is approved.
Thank you, really appreciate that, everyone, I really, now can I offer you all milkshakes?
Yes.
We can't take it, but it's a great offer, we'll still come in and buy one, that's a promise.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Several.
Have a good night.
I'll leave you guys, well, thank you again, have a great night.
YouTube.
Good luck too.
Aye.
And last but not least, tonight we have applications to twenty twenty five zero zero seven, zero zero eight and zero zero nine Town Pl- Town Place Suites by Marriott. Welcome. Good evening.
I'm Todd Sabatell, I'm a, actually a project manager for Indus Hospitality Group, so we would, we're the owners of the Town Place Suites. So I'm here for John Ah, uh, he wasn't able to come tonight, so I'll be here representing the company on the signage issues.
Excellent. You've been hearing some of our conversations.
I have.
So there's definitely gonna be a few concerns, but let's uh, who's leading this one?
Me.
John, you wanna start?
Yeah, sure. So the, the signage that I was reading in through the uh, information that you sent and a bunch of other information, so the signage that you sent is basically what the um. Hotel chain wants.
The signage that the hotel chain wants is a lot bigger, twice this, twice what this is, yeah. Bigger and more, for sure.
Why did you deviate from that?
Well, there's a cost factor, right, those, those wall signs are very, very expensive, um, there's that and, and it's like. The term we like to use is the juice worth the squeeze, right, now what are we gonna gain by spending this money and putting this on the building? So when working with the town initially, I've been, I've been working on this, the signage for this building for. Probably close to eight months, just going back and forth, at one point we were up to fourteen variances, which was. The other issue, um, and so we, you know, again, with, with dealing with the owner of Indus and, and walking around looking at the properties, we said, hey, look, we can scale this down. Be effective in drawing folks to our hotel, keep the variances to a minimum and keep the cost down.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, will you have more questions?
Uh.
So, so you have um. The proposed signage right now, you have two wall signs. They're gonna be on the building that are channel letters. And then you are posing for one monument sign, which is coming off of Kenneth Drive. And then um, uh, twelve by twelve pylon sign, which is. Uh, forty five feet. O A H off of the ground.
Highway, I think.
Yep. Um, can you explain a little bit about? The third sign, the pylon sign and why you feel it's necessary?
You're referring to pylon sign, not the monument sign?
Uh.
No.
The, the pylon sign.
Okay.
Pylon sign number three.
In your, in your documentation.
Okay, that's a brand standard, the pole sign is a brand standard, it's a, it's a requirement from the brand. Um, so we, we were looking at this as. You know. Per code we're allowed one wall sign and one pylon or one monument sign, so. You know, our take on it was, we'll get our one approved wall sign and we'll get our pylon sign, the variance is really for that monument sign and for the second wall sign. And then obviously square footage. Um, you know, and square footage, because of how our. Building is oriented on Kenneth Drive, you know, we're limited based on. Based on that, so, so just the way it's oriented gets us for square footage wise. So the monument sign issue is, as we look at it is. You know, we're, we're covered on the south side of the building, you know, folks on Lehigh Station Road will be able to see that sign at what we will call the front of the building. Uh, the east sign and the, and the pylon sign are really for the folks on three ninety. We weren't able to get directional signs in on Kenneth Drive, which we normally do, uh, there's a water authority right away there and. Again, because of the size of the signs and how far back they had to be off the road. We looked at it like, well, let's illuminate all those signs, we'll put a monument sign and again for folks, as you're coming down Kenneth Drive. You know, you're not gonna be looking up at our, at our building sign, we need something to direct you into the property.
But. Good. Can you, can you do that one again, the one, that last part? You were referring to number four, which is on Kenneth Drive?
Right.
Okay, so the idea is through traffic or someone that's looking for that destination would see four because it's lower?
No, no, they, we, yeah, the idea is if you're looking, right, you're not gonna drive down and be looking up at the building for that, it's just a, you know, it's kind of like a safety thing, you're driving, you know you're close. Normally, when you enter a business, you'll see directional signs where you know where the driveways are.
Yes.
And, and again, because we didn't have that, our idea was we'll have that monument sign, um, you know, positioned there at the entrance of the building.
So what's the juice that you get out of number one, which is the twenty four channel sign on the south side?
Number one gets us the view from Lehigh.
Behind where?
Behind Taco Bell.
Yeah, why would you need to know? Uh. That's, why would you be behind there and not know where you already were?
Hey, what do you mean?
So I'm just trying to, what I'm doing is I'm looking at from each angle. Uh, could I have an appropriate amount of awareness, if I'm coming south on three ninety? You've got the wall sign and you've got the pole sign, there's, there's good visibility and awareness, if I'm driving Kenneth Drive, I see number four and I have awareness. I don't yet see the unique value of number one, because I've already seen it from both, the sign from both sides.
Well, if you, if you've come down Lehigh Station, you haven't taken three ninety, right, then you'll have the pole sign and you'll have that, this really, we're looking for visibility from Lehigh Station Road. That's what that wall sign.
Because four is too low for a Lehigh drive-by.
Right, it's kind of. Okay, kind of past the point of no return at that point, right, it's, it's, it's a ways down Kenneth Drive, we won't be able to see it from Lehigh and we're trying to get that turn at the light.
But you know, so. Be able to see number one.
You're driving.
On the. On the building.
South elevation. From Lehigh. The south elevation is the one we're seeing from Lehigh, but in your picture, you have the tall pole sign on the. Left of the building, which to me would be the west.
South elevation is.
No, number three is the pylon sign.
They're really tall.
I understand, but. If you, if we're looking at the south elevation picture. You, that's the picture from Lehigh.
So that, that elevation picture, that pylon sign that you're seeing in that rendering is just to show reference for the height of the sign versus the height of the building, that's not the location.
Okay, so we're looking at that picture and it's not what's gonna be on earth.
So imagine, imagine the, the pylon sign.
Is on the right.
The right.
That's what I thought.
Yes. We were looking for.
Does that change what you're thinking or to you?
No, I, I understand now.
Um.
I, go ahead.
So, so. That page is backwards, and so we have a big sign from, that you can see from Regional International or Taco Bell or something, we have a big sign on the wall that you can see from. Um.
Three ninety.
From the highway. And then we have now there, and there's a pole sign there, which isn't in question, but it is to me, as even though it's not the variance.
Right.
We are asked, they're asking for an extra sign, so we, if I don't like that huge sign, for example, as an example. If I said no to the other variants, they could keep the tall one, but they would lose the one that they really want, which is on the street.
I, I'm on that side, like, I would rather see sign two than three.
Two.
Cause two is facing the three ninety, that's.
Yeah, I agree with you, I like sign two, I think that one's nice, I think it makes sense to me and I think people see it from the highway.
I think three is, I don't like it.
I don't like three either, but three, again, three's not in question, but we do have the capability to not approve four. If that's what we desired.
Right.
To get our, to get our situation across, but I like four.
So I, just out of um, curiosity, say we, we. Not approve sign number four, they could do either a pylon sign or a monument sign?
Yeah.
To their choosing.
Yeah.
That would not be in our scope.
Yeah, but we couldn't say that about that. We also have a variant, we have three variances and let's just verify what they are. Um.
Yep, we have the total signage, which is four seventy two. Um. Where, where two fifty is allowed.
So it's double the size of the signage.
Yep. And then.
They originally wanted eight hundred.
Well.
And then right here.
Irrelevant to us, right, it's, it's double.
An additional wall sign.
And then um, then the second monument, such a ground sign.
Monument or pole, whatever.
Yeah, well, one is allowed.
But one is allowed and they've decided that number three in the marking is, in the diagram is allowed. I don't like number three, that's the only one I have a problem. Okay. That's my sense, what do we feel on these, Aaron, I'm gonna do a straw poll right now.
Yeah, I. I can't get behind the additional square footage. For the use of doing the pole sign and the monument sign, so I have to. Pose it for that reason.
So all of them are just one? You're getting, you're, you're eliminated, you're not okay with the square footage? Okay, Tim?
Does the issue really, the, the monument or the pole sign is really less about square footage and it's more about the actual sign?
To me, it's about the pole sign. Now, the pole sign's not in question here.
Right.
So the only thing we can do is not approve the things that are on there, if we, if we're against it as a whole, it's a board, so we, I'm one vote and. Um, I like the, I like the monument sign.
Yeah.
And I like the two wall signs, a lot, I think it looks awesome, it really looks nice. I don't even think the, the pole sign looks bad, I don't like the pole signs and one of the problems that you'll hear from us or has been on record before. Which I can't stand saying, it's the perpetuity. If you were ever to leave there. Some other entity could come in and have that monster pole sign there.
Yeah, and, and, and I can understand that and, and let me just give you a little idea about our company.
We would like to hear it.
So we own and operate twenty, this will be our twenty third hotel.
Yes.
Uh, we own twenty three Dunkin' Donuts, we own eleven Taco Bells and four KFCs. Owner of our company's been doing this for a very, very long time.
Yes.
We build, we own, we operate, we run. We have thirteen hundred employees. We still own the very, very first hotel. It was a microtel in Springville that our owner bought, never. All we do is build more and we're in the process of building another one on Jefferson Road at three ninety.
Will there ever?
Look away through the approval process, let's say.
Will there ever be a time when someone in the company wants to uh recoup their cash and sell?
We're a very, we're a very fluid company. We have never sold an asset to buy another asset. It's just not what we do. It's not in our.
I don't mean to buy another asset. I mean to to take their money and leave.
Yeah, it's a single owner. It's not a, so it's not like we have investors where someone's like, you know what, I'm out and we have to pay that person or or something.
If this gentleman wanted to. Take his. Profits that he's earned over the years and sell it to another entity. As a whole, so he can cash out. Which happens at some point in time. Maybe the family takes it, his kids or something relatives. But at some point, a lot of companies will cash out.
Hmm.
Not all. And so our question that we keep thinking about, and it's something that you don't know anything about, but we always think about, is that what happens if?
Yeah, no, and I understand that.
Or or the, you know, God forbid, there's another COVID or something and it shuts down all the businesses, right?
We certainly, we certainly survived the last COVID epidemic.
Thank God.
But, uh, you know, it's funny you mention this because I was listening to the Abbott's thing and. Um, I was a code enforcement officer in this town from nineteen ninety four to nineteen ninety nine and a lot of the signage. Um, that's allowed today wasn't allowed back then. You know, I see, you know, banners that are up, A-frame signs that we never would have allowed. You know, there's a lot of changes that the town has made over the years in the town code and and how we approach certain things. You know, I used to write parking tickets, you know. Forty a day for. Five straight years. I don't know if anybody's writing parking tickets anymore. Things evolve, things, things change, but. Oh, a majority of the businesses in this town are allowed a wall sign and pole sign. You know, and I understand that you're, that you have a problem with the pole sign, but. Everybody's allowed to have a pole sign. He's allowed to have two.
Yep, but.
And I get it, nonconforming pre-existing. I get it. I'm I'm not, you know.
Has its own uh merits on how they do this, so that is something that we've.
And and the other thing that we're looking at is way off Lehigh Station Road, right? We're.
You are.
Back, you know, we're not in a residential, we're not even in a a super busy business area.
You are way off Lehigh Road, but the other thing I would argue in your, in your rebuttal of that, in my mind, is the height of that is higher than everything.
Right.
Uh, everything. Except maybe at R I T in town, right?
Well, it's 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 certainly not higher than the building, but again, that's DOT allows it, you know, we're in, we're in code as far as that goes.
Yeah.
And and I, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that go on that we don't necessarily like, but. I mean, it's allowed.
That one's a lot, but we have, the control that we do have, though, is. We don't have to allow the other one.
No, you don't. And I certainly respect your decision, but to.
And um.
To say, hey, you you, we don't really like the pole sign, but we're gonna eliminate the monument sign. That it doesn't serve your purpose. You still have the pole sign. You know what I mean?
You might have the street, you might decide the other sign's more important for you.
Again, it's your decision to make, and I understand it and I respect it.
Have to decide it, and I'm not trying to fight you on it. What I am trying to do is. Uh. Discuss it with the board and and get your feedback, cause it's important to us.
Yeah.
Christian, I think you had a comment. I think.
The question I was gonna ask Kevin was, did you see, uh, we were doing in, we were in the. Um. Yeah, that's where I was looking for it. Um, you said that forty five feet isn't even the minimum that they could, they could have gone higher if they wanted to.
Right. So it could have been fifty foot if it's freeway or highway face.
Okay, so they're not at the maximum.
And also, could it be up to twenty five feet above? The road bed of three nine.
The road bed, not not the off ramp, but the the road bed.
Well, the road bed of the.
What's the, what's the, what are we digging at, though?
Basically, just saying is that. Yeah, so basically just that they could go higher if they wanted to, and so they're not going as high as they could have asked for, so.
Yeah, it could be a twenty five.
And bigger.
Yeah. And my thought is that since it's not taller than the building itself.
So your vote is go.
I'm I'm okay with it.
All four?
Yes.
Um, just a seeking clarification question. You indicated that. The brand would love to have more. Signages.
Yeah.
You indicated that you all, as a business, sat down and said, you know, what is the best option that we can do? With very minimum amount of sign or signages that we can present and still be able to identify the brand.
Right.
Still be able to advertise the brand, still be able to be a viable and successful business. At a location that does not already have a hotel on that particular location.
Mm-hmm.
That would be new to the area. In addition to the fact that it's not the typical hotels that we see on that corner now.
Right.
So in order for you to accomplish that, you've already narrowed down what exactly you feel is the very minimum.
Right.
Thank you.
So how do you feel?
I see that it's fine.
Good.
I have a question for the advocate. So what if you are coming to the north? How? How, like, from the Paychex area, how do you anticipate someone trying to find your property?
Again, we can't cover everything, right? So really, we're looking at the monument sign. If you're, if you're coming just down Kenneth Drive heading south. That's what we're going for. You know, we're looking again for the kind of biggest bang for our buck and we figure the most folks are gonna come. Lehigh, three ninety. So we're trying to cover those areas.
Do we know how many signs are on Super Eight Hotel right around the corner?
Do I know?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I don't off the top of my head. I know they have a pole sign and at least one wall sign. I don't know if they have two wall signs or not.
I will look.
Then what are your thoughts?
Um. I think. That I think sign number three serves the function of high-speed. Drive-by and three ninety awareness. Oh, look at that. There's a cool, there's new hotel. I think, I think that's the point of that. I think four. Clearly, from either direction on Kenneth Drive is a function and is, it's small enough that I think it's tasteful. But I do think that one and two will probably blend into the building enough that they won't be, it won't, it won't feel oversigned. With the four that are requested. I'm okay with it.
Aaron?
You know, given. I'm okay with the short answers. I'm okay with it.
Was yours?
Yeah.
Any questions from members of the audience? Mike, you have a question. Please make sure you go up to the microphone.
You wanna see my papers?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
Mike Stanford, thirty two Essex Drive. So I just, on the pole sign, how large was that? And then uh, the other question is, do you, the Taco Bell, do you own that? Is that one of yours? Okay.
Well, that's funny. I thought you.
He owns, yeah. The size of the pole sign.
Twelve by twelve.
Twelve.
Okay.
Is that all? Are you good?
Yep.
Mister Chairman, with regards to applications, numbers.
Oh wait, I'm supposed to say these applications closed. These applications closed.
Mister Chairman, with regards to application numbers, C B A twenty twenty five zero zero seven, zero zero eight, zero zero nine. For a variance compared, for an area variance, I move to approve. Whereas the zoning board has. Newly advertised and held public hearings, has considered all relevant information and has considered. The potential benefits to the applicant versus the. Potential detriment to the neighborhood and community in re- relations to such variance. Now, therefore, be it resolved, if the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings effects. The variance will not. Result in an undesirable change to the characteristics of the neighborhood. Uh, the com- it's a commercial area and it's on a secondary road and they actually, it gives them more visibility. The variance cannot be achieved by another feasible alternative. Property um on side road signage is required by the. Required by the um hotel chain. Applicant has reduced the size for the hotel chain. Down to two or four, four seventy two. Uh, the variance required is not substantial. The variance will not have a negative effect on the physical or environmental condition. The difficulty related to the variance was self-created. Uh, but it is necessary for the guests to be able to see where the hotel is when they're coming off three ninety and the or Lehigh Station Road. And be a further res- resolve that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves. And be a further uh as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Beth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.